United States of America, in a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Should we roll call please?
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Trustee Garrett.
Here.
Mayor Martin. Here. Need a motion to approve the minutes previous meeting, February 11?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussions, deletions, additions, changes? The only one I found was on page five. Need to change the date. From March 11th to March 4th? Dispurchase requisition was tabled until?
Oh. Yeah, okay.
But technically, that's what we said then.
Right, that's what you said, there wasn't an error.
Okay, no, it wasn't an error. It was just, could we change it or not? Keep that way?
No.
Okay, good, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Presentation, petitions, communications, notices, general question period, members of the community.
Don't really have any questions, I just saw there was a meeting, so.
Oh, okay, good. Glad you're here.
And I was out, so I came over.
Good. All right. Mr. Tetra was in my class. I have no report for him. Go on to my report. We are searching for two leaks in the water system. One very large break in the village, and a smaller break in the town, lines along Ridge Road. Rural Water has been here assisting the DPW crew, trying to locate these breaks. One is quite large, to the tune of about 100,000 plus a day, and the one at the town is somewhere in the vicinity of 7,000? Okay, 9,000 per day. It's a bit difficult to find them. Significant amount of water has been lost over the past four or five days. Rural Water has been here, this is the second day, and they'll be here again tomorrow. Hopefully, we can locate, repair both leaks as soon as possible. We have received notification that the village of Rouse's Point will no longer be participating in the C2RP water sewer project. I for one, am sorry to see Rouse's Point not being an active participant in this future water, wastewater project, that I strongly believe that will have a huge impact on water and wastewater delivery in the two villages and the town. A meeting has been scheduled tomorrow, March 5th, 11:00 a.m., at the town offices, to discuss the possibilities of the town and village of Champlain continuing to pursue funding for this project. I believe this project will mean new areas available for development, job development, and better delivery of water and wastewater services into town of Champlain. I would like to thank trustee Thomas Grisenda for his involvement and his interest in serving the village of Champlain. I have a letter from Tom, when it is his turn, that I would like to read for his trustee report. I would like to encourage all registered voters to come to the village office and vote, March 19th, from noon to 9:00 p.m. This is a very important opportunity for voters to cast their votes regarding the future of the village of Champlain. Thank you. Trustee Trombley.
Just a reminder also about the meeting, Greg, on Thursday night.
Yes.
There's a meeting on Thursday evening regarding dissolution of gentleman from the Department of State.
Oh, NICOM.
NICOM, will be here. Very important meeting, people to attend. And I really have nothing.
Trustee Trombley.
Nothing reported this evening, there.
Here. Trustee Garrett.
A few things, continuing to apply for grants. Found a wonderful site that will give me more access to more funding that doesn't come up without massive digging. America's got funding, and we put in our criteria of what we're looking for. It weeds out all of these grants that, you know, it's time consuming to go through and read all the criteria on. So, there is a fee to access a site of $29.95, and I'm requesting to put this under new business to get approval for that, otherwise I'll just pay for it myself, doesn't matter, but we can take it out of parts and wreck, that'd be great. So, applied for another grant this month, will continue to keep plugging at them. We are blocked a lot because we're municipality, not a 501(c)(3), but there is stuff out there, it just doesn't matter if people find, and eliminate grants. So, if anyone comes across anything, I know Catherine gave me a lead on one, and we took care of that, which was great. So, anyone else who comes across leads for grant availability, don't hesitate to give me a call, send me an email, and we'll just keep, keep plugging at it.
Have you received some new information on playground material in the mail, last week, didn't you?
From Game Time?
Yeah.
A lot of, a lot of the, almost every single playground equipment offers grants, but you must buy all your stuff from them. So, it's a matter of who's going to give us the best deal, and it's a matching grant-type situation. So, still, we have to raise the money, I'd like to try and get some of these grants where it's not matching. I will have no problem matching in-kind services, but if it's $30,000 of equipment we have to buy, and then pay another $30,000, it's still significant amount of money. So, I'm trying to find the sources more so first, before I narrow down a company with, who will go with, as to how much actual funding will be coming in for. And that's it.
Thank you. March 4th, 2013. Mayor Martin, members of the board, employees of the village, and residents of the village. It has been a rewarding and insightful term for me, as trustee for the village, to see and participate firsthand with village operations. It is clear the village is run in a streamlined manner, with its best interest being for the community. For many years as a resident, I knew of the general structure and function of the village. I did not, however, know of the inner workings and further responsibilities of the village. I would imagine that there are many other residents that fall into that category. There was certainly a lot going on, and I've learned how it is managed and planned exceptionally well. I urge others to be involved, attend meetings, join the festivities, attend budget review meetings, and you will, you will see, like me, that this government is there for you, representing and working with the residents. It has been a great pleasure serving the village board, and offer my best wishes that the village continues operations for many years to come. Regards, Thomas Grisenda.
Maybe an explanation as to why you're reading it?
Well, if you wanted to read this, part of his report.
But to the community, as to why did he left the area?
Oh, I'm sorry. Included this as Thomas Grisenda's report, he has left the area, taken a job in Connecticut. He's in the process of changing his residence. Over the next month or two, his house is up for sale. In fact, both he and his wife have found employment in Connecticut, so it will be a loss to this board, as well as to the community. Have the report from the clerk treasurer, please.
Everyone's received the expenditure and revenue reports, both thank you, Warren. Jennifer George, but. And we also have one purchase request for a pocket kilometer.
This was tabled last week. The explanation that you asked me to find, the one that's being used is at least 10 years old. It's used both at the wastewater and at the water plant. It needs extreme recalibration. It's not accurate. There is very little difference between the cost of recalibrating it and buying a new meter. It's used in the break room to check the chlorine meter running in the sink. And if there's a problem with the chlorine, and it gets below .2, we use both the machine in the bag, as well as this pocket kilometer, to check and recheck the amount of chlorine that's coming through the system. Need a motion?
So moved, to purchase.
Have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
This is for 38601.
38601, yes. It's one of, again, we need to begin to update some of our old equipment, make this more functional, more efficient. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Grisenda. Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Presentation of the work, clear?
We have additional invoices, for total, the additional invoices totaling $4,237.
Need a motion to approve the work?
So moved.
Have a second?
With the additional invoices totaling $4,237.
No, that's just the additional invoice.
$237.
No.
Forty-two thirty-seven, forty-two hundred thirty-seven.
$237.
You said $4,237.
I've been out of school for almost a year now, I'm sorry. Forgot how to read numbers, I don't remember swimming there, but.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the work? They had all the electric bills when they made this early.
They stand out that way.
Yes, they do. Any discussion, concerns? You'll notice an increase under the sewer fund, you're going to notice an increase with sewer testing. We are, by D E C, we are required to take more tests on the private haulers coming in. We have to take a sample. It was recommended that we take three or four samples a month, and send them to the lab, have them checked, just to see what's, what's coming into the system. But I was talking to someone about this, and they said, well, it's already in the, already in the system at that point, but we'll test.
You don't test it from the point of exit before it enters?
When you're offloading the, offloading the truck, yeah. But you're not going to get the results for a few days.
But it could potentially stop you from taking waste from someone who's giving you things that aren't good.
Yes, yes. Checking for metals and stuff like that. Anything else on the work? Roll call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. I'm sorry, report from the superintendent.
We had an issue with water running on rural Mill Street that we resolved, I talked with the people that, you know, they're spreading the maintenance guys in a condensate pump that wasn't working, and it's been repaired, so that's been care of. I also had a frozen water line in the ground at 4 Mill Street, which we worked on to get it thawed out, and as of today, it is thawed, the water's restored. We did run a temporary line for them, contacted the board of health. We will sample tomorrow, once we get the okay, we told them, you know, we could boil this water, we did supply them with fresh water. Once we get the approval that everything is okay, then we'll let them know, and he can carry on as normal. We had a hydrant on top of the hill, on Main Street, just up past the laundry building that was leaking, we tried to use it, that's been repaired. Also, I had one at Ted Headford's, he had a leaking water line inside his residence in the basement near the water meter, that's been repaired, and we're still working on finding where the water, where the water that we're missing was going, which we had said earlier. We'll work on it again tomorrow and see if we can narrow down, try to take section by section and eliminate, to try to narrow down where it's coming from.
Where are we right now, Mike?
Well, in the morning, we have a couple shut offs that we can't, one of them's been tarred over, we're going to have to cut the tarmac to get to the shut off, because there's a couple of them, there's loops, and you've got to be able to isolate the loop. We have another one that we can't shut off, and I don't know if we're going to have to dig it, it's having a pretty good angle, but that's where we are, as of right now.
So, on Prospect?
On Prospect, yeah, just almost out on the scenes, there's one there we can't shut, and then on the bottom, on Elm, on the opposite side from where Prospect comes out, there's one that's been tarred over, that we'll have to probably take out in the morning, to get into the cover. It's not deep, but just take care of that.
Is that going to create an issue with the road?
No, it shouldn't.
A nicely paved, expensive road?
Well, it could be cold there, too. Yeah, it shouldn't be that deep, it's just covered, you've got to get the plate, so.
So, it's probably like the top, it wouldn't work out on plates, just a couple inches.
A lot of times, they put something there, and they peel it off, of course, it makes a little bump. In this case, I'm sure they kept it smoother, you don't have to open it until you get a situation we have to.
Yeah.
So, we're going to work on that in the morning. Rural Water will be here at 9:00, trying to narrow down where the, where the leak is, if you can take care of. Also, water meter, I don't know.
Or some new business.
Old business.
Old business, that was tabled last time. The meter we have now, really wasn't, is not the right meter for what we need, where it's located, there's not enough pipe to give us an accurate reading. The only way to use that meter would be, have to be reengineered, you'd have to change all the piping, which is going to cost more than what the meter, what a new meter would be, plus, we don't know accuracy-wise, but they have, what's there compared to what we can get now. New meter, electromagnetic meter, something we can install ourselves. Where the old meter is, we can cut the school piece and fit it right in place, and there's no, service life should be a 20-year service life, there's no mechanical parts really to, to go bad. Stainless rods in there, it's through electromagnetic field. Now, along with that, wasn't originally on, I don't know if it's going to be a sole business or new business, but there is a, they call it an AT pack, it's a transmitter, and it goes to a chart recorder, so it can be a double pen chart recorder, so you can record when a pump runs, it's got, you know, how many gallons, totalizer, and all this, because there is a chart recorder in there now, but it's just not working, an open chart recorder. So, that's something we should look into, as well as this meter, in conjunction, to put in.
And install together.
This way here, we have something that's always recording, besides we do our regular readings, and some of all of that on.
Those were the pumps are on, when they're off.
Right. You can set different parameters, yeah.
Can you get us some quotes on those?
Yep, I actually, I've got one, and I have another one that was supposed to be here this afternoon, and it came in, so should have it this week.
And the meter that's there, I think we've talked about this in the past, but the meter that's there is rated at 400 gallons per minute?
Pump, yes, the pump is, I, between, I think it's between 350 and 400.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the meter's showing?
Like 460, or, yeah, it's awful, even with the pump, and that's usually zero, that's at no static end, that's at linear flow. So, we know what's under what it's showing, so it's definitely on.
So, essentially, it's showing us pump over a lot more water than what we're actually selling, and that's our lost water percentage was so high at 2,011. So, we'll come back, do you want to do the recommendation now?
On which meter, you think?
On which meter?
If you're okay with it, as long as Mike tells which one he's.
Well, we have correspondence where you can.
Can I ask you another question on your report? I know we talked earlier about it, but the more thinking about it, this, this loop on Elm, you know, that you need to cut into, is there a way of eliminating everything else before we cut into that nice road? And leave that as a last resort?
That's what we're down, that's what we're down to.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, we've got a couple valves, and there's loops in them, we have to close that loop to know if it's flowing.
Okay.
If it's flowing through, unfortunately.
As long as we cut into these nice roads, I know. Okay.
How big, we're on the top?
Yeah, it's probably six or eight inch, and if it's, I don't know how deep it is, if it's not that deep, you know, we'd be, we have to take rid of, you know, we have to put coal patching now temporarily.
Coal patching the torch, solidify it pretty good for the.
At least you get it filled back in your, you know, pot holder.
And that to keep water from getting in and freezing, etc.
Well, speaking of cutting across streets, I know that when they did Chestnut years ago, and then they cut across, the school bus now is coming to almost a complete stop because the stop down is so dramatic. So, if you'll please keep your eye on that.
See if it crosses, bring it back, and if not, then we'll have to.
The buses are going to bring that one back.
The buses come into almost a complete stop now, so they have to crawl over it.
Yeah, but it is, well, it is different from this, because that was, they went and they laid a pipe across.
Right, I know, but it seems every time we do a road, we have to cut into it.
Well, this year, it'll just be the top, where in that case, it was dug down and then soil compacted.
Right.
So, it settled.
But that, that, on Chestnut, is progressively, yeah.
It's getting worse.
Worse, yeah. And I, I realize it's going to come up a little bit in the spring, but still, it's.
Well, slowing down the traffic on that road, you know, before, it was a, it's a really fast cut through, but.
Maybe if somebody.
You're bottom out now, if you go flying down Chestnut.
Maybe if somebody could consider putting a patch in there.
Yeah, the other thing I had also is, right now, I'm working on a list of streetlights, see, there's quite a few streetlights in the village that are out, or the eyes are by them, they're staying on, compiling a list now, send to ICE, so they can, they're working in their schedule to get us taking care of it, streetlights back on, and those are coupled by your place.
I was just going to say.
They're disco lights.
I meant to call it.
Those go on and off, yeah.
They're disco.
I took a ride around.
And they go off when you walk under them.
At night, I take a ride around.
Every time you walk under them, they go out. It's a guarantee.
Or if you're walking your dog, and you're kind of keeping your eyes on it.
We have one up by my house.
That's when they go out.
Yeah, let it know, all of those, because we are guaranteed that these, it should be doing that.
I've got a list, and then I went around during the day to make sure, because some are staying on.
I thought they were on some kind of a timer that they put somehow, because it's awfully dark when it's out.
Yeah, they have, they have to go through ICE, so we have to put a request in, and they fit it in their schedule, but I do have a list started.
I thought that's how we were saving money.
She's still charged the same.
At the end of Vine Street, that we historically crossed, I'm sure, it's popping out all of the. Any other questions for?
No, that's all, sorry.
Do the correspondence now, then we can go to full business.
Letter to Eric Grover regarding the board's decision to deny his request for reduction in the water sewer service, fee charges for his property located at 1238 Route 9. Correspondence from Robert Bouswa regarding water service at 36 Moore Street. Correspondence from the village of Rouse's Point regarding the decision not to participate in the C2RP water sewer project.
Okay, if I may comment on correspondence number two, please. It starts out, the property located at 36 Moore Street is not in the village water district. It is in the village water district. A line was installed by a former tenant to tie into the system. It was the owner, not the tenant. The line was broken as the sewer line and the water line was, was dug up, and a piece of equipment fell into the trench and broke the water line. In 2009, the water line froze, was shut off somewhere down the street. That is incorrect, it was in front of the trailer. There is no water service to this property, that is true, has been shut off since the pipe was destroyed, and we wrote, I wrote, we wrote, the letter writer, a bit of information dated 19 September 2012, telling the respondent that the water line and meter pit was damaged as the property was being renovated, and that if he wished, he could set up a new water line that must be inspected by the village before water service would be resumed. I look at this as a nuisance letter, and I don't feel that the board needs to respond to this.
New business, please. Old business, please. Need a motion to address the water meter, water pipe?
Make a motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Mike, you want to give us your recommendation, please?
Census AcuMag meter is the one that I found with most fair application. There was another one that was very close in price, but it cannot be hooked to a chart recorder. It's a read on top of the meter only, where this one, you can hook it to a, to a recorder to have a recording, to back up data.
Now, as we repair that new paper gauge?
Chart recorder.
Chart recorder, that will plug into this meter?
Yeah, there's a, actually, I've got cut sheets for it, but there is a automatic control translator that will, goes between, a box that goes between the chart recorder and this unit, that way it can record on the chart. And it has different settings, you can use totalizer, you can use, there's different settings for it. The other ones, the other, the, the next cheapest one that I found, a little bit more than this one, could not be hooked to a recorder. It was, we read it on it, and that's it.
So, you have.
This is the same one that we got the information on last time?
First one, yeah.
Yes, okay. And this hook-on-chart thing that you're discussing, how does that run? Does it run by plug-in electricity? Is it run from the generation of the water?
No, it runs on electric.
Okay, so are we going to need a backup generator for this, if it goes down? Is this something that's critical to capture water and the?
No, because if the generator's not running there, the pumps aren't running, it's when the pumps run, it's going to supply water.
Right, but we do backup generators down there for that purpose?
Right, which it can be tied in, it could be tied in, so it could run at the same time, yeah.
I didn't know if it was necessary, was my question, is it necessary to even do that, or is it not something?
There is a, I believe it's a three-hour backup battery built into it.
Oh, okay.
So, it'll run, of course, depending on conditions, if it's cold, or if it's, it might be less than three hours, but there is a short-term battery backup where it'll hold, you know, information, time, this kind of thing. The seven-day recorder is what it is, every week you change the paper, once a week, the recorder's only seven days.
What was the cost of the meter that you recommended?
The meter that I recommended was $4,600, and there would be no freight charges on it.
Do I go against your motion? Do you have a motion?
$4,600.
Add the $4,600 in, so it looks normal.
Oh, okay. I make a motion for the AcuMag meter at a price of $4,600, with no freight charges.
Second.
Any other discussion? What's the time on this one? Mike, do you have any idea, delivery time?
It's not very long, I know, like. It's not very long. I know I talked to, when I did ask it that, I would say it would maybe probably have it.
So barring any unforeseen difficulties, we should have that in before the people first, somewhere center.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Motion passes. Second under no business, pocket kilometer, we've already addressed. Any other rule business before the board? New business? Need a motion to change the date of the April board meeting to April first. It's the same date as our annual organizational meeting.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Amy, would you go back and go back over that?
This is a website called America's Got Funding. It's a twenty-nine ninety-five charge, and what they do is I've plugged in all my information, the criteria, what we're looking for, and they search out the grants for me and send me back who I need to apply for, which saves me hundreds of thousands of hours. The cost is twenty-nine ninety-five. If we do not receive a grant within the next year, they refund the money. Based on, I've applied for some grants and been denied. Not that I just got all the information and did nothing about it. So I just have to show proof to get the refund that we have made application with a denial letter being sent back. But it will help me dramatically to weed out all of those, because I can spend hours every day reading on grants. And you may get one out of hours of reading that we qualify for, and this will help me weed that.
So basically, after you put your information in, it'll bring up the ones that...
Brings up all the ones that are available for municipalities, for playground, I put in for playground, I put in for health.
Health and wellness.
Health and wellness type deals, community enrichment, community development. There's three categories that we qualified under, so...
Well, I make a motion that we spend the twenty-nine dollars for the grant site for Amy.
Twenty-nine ninety-five.
Twenty-nine ninety-five.
Is there a tax?
No.
My second motion.
Roll call, please, for this expense?
So if we could, before, John, I'll just put it on my credit card so I can get these started filming to me, and then you can reimburse them.
Okay.
Do you want me to amend my motion for reimbursement?
Sure.
I make a motion that reimburse Amy twenty-nine ninety-five for the grant of ratings on site, America's Got Funding. Thank you.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Any other new business? Before we adjourn, just to give you a heads up, at the wastewater plant, I know we've talked about this in the past, we need to increase the efficiency. We talked about buying some membranes, nine-inch membranes for the aerators. We discussed that at least a little bit. I had, would he get some quotes? We started with four twenty-five. I thought it would be better money spent if we did the entire, the entire number of aerators totaling eight hundred and fifty. The quote we got was for six dollars each, with a total of fifty-four hundred dollars. I'd like to bring this back to you next, at the next board meeting, so that we can purchase this under this year's budget. We can purchase it. It should save us some money. Also, we have a pump that went down at the lift station on Pottet, Pottet Drive, Wayne. The price of the new pump is forty-three seventy-five plus freight, and I'll bring this back to you next month to purchase another pump to replace the one that we're going to install tomorrow for the next day. But we had a new one in the back. As you know, with these pumps, it's more money conscious really to buy a new pump rather than try to have them rebuilt.
There's not much difference in cost, if I remember.
There's not much at all. So I will bring this back to you next month so that we can purchase this material or these, this equipment on this year's budget.
And can we just please, when you do that, Mike, guess what it is to rebuild versus purchase? Appreciate it. Yeah, I do remember in the pet night, it's like a couple hundred dollar difference, but just confirm that that's remaining the same.
I don't even know if you can get these rebuilt.
Probably not, and some of these, yes.
And it's, it's, these pumps are different than the rest of what we have in the whole system. They're a different kind of pump, so the ones that we have on hand, as spheres now, will not fit. The last time we addressed this, we bought two.
Correct. But are we saying now these two that we've bought are obsolete?
No.
Just for this one location?
Just for this one location. So we're putting in the second one that we bought in the past, replacing that. So I will bring that back to you after we get the rest of the information we need. Any other business before the board?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.